And get into the next computer system. We'll start right at seven thirty. Just for the audience, if you have any public comments or suggestions. Little less than a minute and we'll get started at seven thirty. The City of Oconomwa Common Council Meeting for Tuesday, March first, two thousand and twenty-two. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
Thank you. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. I'd like to have us all just take a moment of silence. We just honored our flag and the democracy that we live in. There's a lot of bad things happening in Europe and a little bit, little time to ourselves and some thoughts for the folks that live in the Ukraine. Thank you. Would you call roll, please?
Alderman Douglas.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Alderman Zaffel.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Like to entertain a motion for the approval of minutes for February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any comments or questions from the citizens in the audience? Again, the blue cards we talked about at the beginning, do we have any comments? Thank you all for joining us with no comments and no blue cards. Let's move on to consent agenda items A and B. I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved, Zaffel.
Second, Rosick.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's move on to our committee reports. Consider Act on Resolution twenty-two dash R three zero one-one, granting new Class B fermented malt beverage and Class C wine licenses to Ginger Ovens LLC. Like to entertain a motion?
So moved, Kavieski.
Second, Spiegelberg.
Any further comments? Questions?
Yeah, just one. I think one of the representatives is here. He did a nice job at this presentation this time around. Looks really good. We wish you the luck with this, which is what we suggested is come back for the beer and wine first and see how that goes and wish you the best of luck over there.
If we can call roll, please?
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Zaffel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
We're going to move on to new business. We have four different items that we're going to be going through. Laurie is going to go through eight A, B, C, and D, the big picture. And then we also have Phil Costin to go through more of the details of these different bonds that are before you and before council. So Ms. Murray, if you could.
Right.
These four, yeah.
Tonight, we're doing the first steps of our two thousand and twenty-two bond and note series. So Phil Costin's here tonight. He's going to go through each one of them with you. We do have four different resolutions that need to be approved tonight. The first bond, the four point six million dollars, actually is a note, and that's the one that's for our street and water projects, for capital projects for two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three. That's a note. It's ten years. It requires just the one resolution to get it started. The second issue is for the Phase Two of Olympia. That's a bond. That means it's going to be twenty years and it requires a couple of more resolutions. That will require a publication in the paper, notification to the public of the bond issue. And so I'm going to have Phil go through what these pre-sale reports look like and the different resolutions with you. So go ahead.
What we'd like you to do is if you have any questions, council members, please let either Laurie or Phil know. And then we'll go back to each one and we need to vote on each one separately. Mr. Costin.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Good evening. Phil Costin with Ellers. Nice to be back with you tonight. As Laurie indicated, Laurie Murray, I have not used that either yet, indicated we have two different series of notes and bonds that we're going to be looking at here. And I'm going to touch a little bit on the purpose of each. I want to talk a little bit about timing and process that we go through. I know there's a few newer members here as well that might be helpful for. So. There we go. So each of the, we have actually an executive summary for each of the issues that I'm going to spend just a few minutes on. There gets a lot of detail in our pre-sale report and I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through all the detail. But if there are questions along the way, please ask. As Laurie indicated, the first issue is a general obligation note. It's going to finance two and a half million dollars of water main projects and two million dollars of street improvement projects that were part of your capital budget. And while this is a general obligation and you're pledging your general taxing authority against it, for the water portion, we expect the water utility to pick up their portion of that. That won't be levied, but it'll be the responsibility of the actual responsibility of the water utility. We're going to take you through the normal process we've done in the past with a debt issue. If it's authorized tonight, that sets in motion a lot of activities. One, we get a questionnaire out to the city, thank you in advance, because there's a lot of work that goes into returning that information to us. That helps us then prepare what's called an official statement. And we'll send that out and we'll be taking competitive bids on this, just like you would if you're taking bids on a road project or putting a roof on City Hall. We do the same thing with your money to make sure that we have the best deal possible for, for the city. We've indicated in the pre-sale report a number of important issues that we deal with, including arbitrage, do you spend the money and time per federal regulations, investment of bond proceeds, what the risk factors are. And we have all the different players involved spelled out on page number five. We're involved in preparing the official statement, but you also have Quarles and Brady is the city's bond attorney and also not only just your bond counsel, but also your disclosure counsel. So Quarles will be acting in that capacity. And then we have established a call with Moody's Investor Service and we'll be going through the rating process as well. From a timing perspective, we have a schedule in here on page six. So again, tonight authorization sets in motion, us preparing the official statement, contacting the rating agency, and then bringing into the common council on April fifth, an award resolution. So that's night you'll actually approve the final rates based on the bids that were received. And then funds will be wired to the city and closed on April twenty-seventh. And we'll coordinate that, working with city staff and the bidder, who is the low bid and the winning bidder. So that's the process we'll go through. We have attached in here a number of exhibits that we spent quite a bit of time working on. I know not everybody's a numbers person, so I'm going to spare you a little bit and try to give you kind of the high level detail. As part of our modeling, working with staff, we do project out the overall value of the community and make an assumption on growth. And historically, you're averaging somewhere around seven percent growth in the community the last five years. We use about half of that in our projections going forward. On page eight, we build out your base case. Where are you today with your debt levy? And what we're really focused in here is your debt levy. So you have your general obligation debt and then you have a number of offsets, which are water, sewer, electric, and TID seven costs that are different offsets that are paying a portion of the debt service, which leaves a net debt levy divided by your total tax base to get a tax rate per thousand. And what we're trying to accomplish when we do a debt issue is to make sure we don't have like a yo-yo effect in your tax rate. Rather, we want to make sure that things are stable for your debt levy. And that's kind of the focus when we start looking at capital planning. We have the actual sizing on the following page, which shows you the financing of the four million, six hundred and ten thousand dollar, how we got to that number. Again, two and a half million of water main projects and two million dollars of street improvement projects. That's the note issue. I'll be talking about the bond issue for TID number seven in a little bit. And then we have a breakdown of the, of the project by purpose. So we have the two purposes here again, water and street improvements. And you can see on this exhibit, we have the breakout for each of those. So we're financing, as Laurie said, over ten years, very aggressive payback for both the utility and for the general levy. And then we have a total on the far right-hand side on this page of the principal and anticipated interest payments. We'll get into the interest rates in a little bit. And there's a lot of small numbers on this page, but this is where I talked about that tax impact analysis that we run and again, coordinate working with Laurie and staff to make sure that what we're proposing for a debt structure makes sense in a debt levy standpoint. So where is your debt levy going to go from year to year as a result of this debt issue? And again, trying to monitor and make sure that we don't have big jump spikes going up and down in your levy, your debt service levy. And we've accomplished that with this issue. One of the things that comes up pretty often is where you stand with your borrowing capacity. And so this exhibit shows where you are with your existing obligation and where you are going to be with when you add in these two different debt issues. Every municipality is the same. You have, if you're Milwaukee or if you're Pittsville, Wisconsin, five percent of the total value is what you can borrow. In your case, that equates to a hundred forty, I'm sorry, a hundred forty million dollars. It's easy to borrow money. It's hard to pay it back. So you could borrow up to a hundred forty million. You have thirty-nine million of outstanding principal payments. When you add in these two issues on the third column from the right, it'll take you to thirty percent of your borrowing capacity, meaning you have seventy percent left. You have a lot of flexibility is what that means. And I'm sure you have a debt policy that probably is fifty percent roughly. You're well under that fifty percent, even with these two capital borrowings that are being contemplated. Finally, interest rates have been interesting, as you can imagine, over the last couple of months. First, we had the Fed policy, change in policy where they're looking at enacting a number of rate increases. Last, we read they're kind of rethinking some of that, given what's going on with inflation and what's going on obviously overseas as well. So we'll find out in a few weeks as to what the first Fed action is going to be. But before all of that, we've seen over the last two months, a little bit of a rate increase. Nothing that significant when you look at it over a longer time period, like three years, like we're showing in this chart, but rates are definitely up a little bit. In part why we've been working diligently to try to pull this together before we see a lot of those rate increases occur, to kind of take care of this now and when you have time. So that's the first issue. And as Laurie indicated, there's one resolution in regards to the actual four million, six hundred and ten thousand general obligation notes. Would you like me to handle, take that one first?
Yeah, do you have any counsel, do we have any questions or comments for Phil?
This on the first set? This is on just that first four million?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do have a couple of quick questions. You answered my question on the rates issue. We got two million in for streets. What is, why do we have two million? Maybe I lost something here. What is the two million for streets?
Two years.
Oh, because, oh, we're, okay.
We're trying to, we're trying to take advantage of the lower interest rates right now. So this issue is actually for two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three.
Because we've authorized a million in debt borrowing for additional street improvements. How much are we still spending out of our levy on streets?
Another million dollars.
Another million only?
Yeah.
What if, what if we borrow the money and the council makes a different decision next year with regard to long-term financial plan and budgeting for this? We decide not to spend the million anymore on streets?
Well, the issue that we have right now is for a ten-year note, so it's a little bit more flexible. It is, we're not laying out which streets it is or anything like that. So you can still change your mind on the infrastructure that you're going to use. But with what the rates are right now and what they're going to do, it's good for us to borrow for two years. I know people had said, can we do three? Well, we probably could. But because of arbitrage and our ability to get projects done, we really, two years is the best that we can do. Now, if we don't use debt proceeds for projects, we can use it to pay back debt.
Oh, we could use it to pay back other debt?
Yeah.
If we don't use it for the streets?
Right.
So next council in October of this year decides we're not going to spend a million dollars on streets on debt. We're going to go back to all levy spend for whatever reason, or just reduce it to five hundred grand, let's say. We can use that money in some other fashion.
Yeah, as Laurie indicated, there's, notes makes a big difference. You have, as long as it's a public purpose project of any type, you can spend the money over the next three years. And/or, and it gets a little more complicated than just paying off debt, but you have the ability to pay down debt, go through some hoops to do that, but that's an option as well.
The other question is you had some tax implications. What, there is really no tax implications with the water utility though, is there? Because that, that is all out of.
It's all out of the.
Their, from the rate payer for the.
Exactly.
Okay.
As Phil said, it's split between general fund and utility.
So really, the tax implication on the debt's really only related to the road funding?
Correct.
Okay, fair. Thank you.
Alderman Kavieski.
So in regards to the infrastructure obligation, would it have to be allocated to an infrastructure-type project or debt repayment? Or however, the council were to choose to spend that with that flexibility as it being a debt issue?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be infrastructure. It could be equipment. I mean, you could make a decision to, you know, to move the money to different pieces of equipment. It even could be an economic development-type project that you have maybe on the horizon over the next two years that the money gets reallocated to. So you have some flexibility. Bob's happy.
Yeah, yeah. All happy, yeah.
But you have some flexibility. That's why when we talk about general capital projects that are not tied to a specific, like the next one we're going to be talking about, the bond issue, we like notes because it gives you that flexibility.
It doesn't, though, go into a general fund that can be spent without counsel?
No, never could be spent for operations.
Any other questions from council? I think it might be best to then move this forward with a, yeah, do it one at a time, to make sure everybody's clear and concise about everything they're voting on. Any other questions for Laurie or for Phil? And I'd like to entertain a motion, please?
So moved, Kavieski.
Second, Ellis.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please?
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Zaffel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Let's move on to the next one.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Second issue is a little bit different animal. We just talked about notes. This, that's where you have the flexibility. This is bonds. And you'll see it's called general obligation community development bonds because it's earmarked towards, I'll just call it the Wongard Tax Increment District. As you recall, a development agreement was put in place. There was phasing for the capital expenditures. The first phase was borrowed last year along with some incentive monies that were upfront. The second phase is now due and planned for at this point when we went through the modeling for the Tax Increment District. From a big picture standpoint, we've rerun numbers based on the new Phase Two of construction costs, which are higher. No surprise, probably, if you're, talk to any engineer out there, costs are up. But the costs are higher, but they've been offset by the land sale revenue. So you had land sale revenue that we did not account for in the original modeling of the TID plan to try to be conservative, knowing that that money could come in. The good news is it came in and it really offset the increases in the capital expenditure. So I'll show you the numbers in a little bit. The good news is that the anticipated closure of the TIFF district hasn't moved. It's the same, I know, it's disappointing to the mayor. But it hasn't moved because of the cost increases. What's going to move the needle eventually, we think, I think, is that I think the Wongard Development will either move a little bit quicker, which will be an increased revenue to the TIFF, and/or it could come in at a higher value. Either of those occur, it will shorten up the life of the TIFF. So we don't have a lot on that side of the equation, the revenue side yet, because they're just starting the project. But on the expense side, we're right on track, which is.
So you're guaranteeing that both will happen?
No.
Laurie went over this. He's not going to be here and I'm not going to be here. He's going to be retired to Florida.
Who knows, Dan? So let me just talk about the twenty-two B issue. Again, this is the finance Phase Two of the infrastructure for TID number seven. Really contractual at this point in your development agreement that you're going to undertake these projects. There's been a lot of work behind the scenes to try to get the numbers right. I got a call from Laurie today. We're still tweaking numbers, but the numbers continue to move a little bit. This, unlike the other issue, is bonds, meaning it'll have to be spent in TID seven. Can't be reallocated somewhere else. I think probably Laurie would agree, we've taken a conservative estimate on the cost here. So we're not over issuing by any means here. If anything, it may end up being a tad short, meaning we'll figure out another way to finance if there's the need for a few extra dollars here into the project. There's ways we can get there, including just increment, being able to pay for it. So same process that I talked about before, the same timeline I talked about before. This will be rated by Moody's as well. So the schedule is exactly the same as I just went through with the notes. As it pertains to the actual projects, if you look at page number seven of the pre-sale report, you can see the breakdown of the project costs by phasing. It looks a little bit different than what you had seen before again because some of the cost numbers have changed. In addition to that, we have the, I'll call it the old estimates of development, just because we really don't have much to go on yet. I know they've announced Sendix and a few things, which is great news. But hopefully, within a year, we'll have a better handle on kind of where they're going with some of the development projections. We've provided a cash flow, again, a lot of small numbers. But if you look at where it says in the yellow here going across the page in the bottom, twenty forty-one, that's the same year as we had projected before in the project plan. Even though numbers have shifted, we're still projecting the same timeframe for a closure of Tax Increment District number seven. So this is really contractual to finalize the city's obligation for capital expenditures in this Tax Increment District.
Any questions from council? Alderman Kavieski.
So there's going to be a separate project on sixty-seven to enhance those lanes that wasn't anticipated originally. Does that cost in this? Yes.
Any other questions for, on this bond issue? Like to entertain a motion, please?
So moved, Zaffel.
Second, Ellis.
Any further questions or comments? Let's call roll, please?
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Zaffel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
We'll move on to eight C, another bond issue.
Yeah, I'll give you a real quick explanation why we have three different bond issues, three different resolutions for this one bond issue. One is the purpose, which is community law bonds. Second is that you're giving us authorization to proceed with the financing. And the third is a notice to the electors. Every time you do a bond in the state of Wisconsin, you need to file a notice to the electors to make sure they know that you're issuing debt. So it comes in three different pieces, but it's really for one, this one bond issue.
Like to entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please?
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Zaffel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
And do your last one, Phil.
The last one is the notice to the electors.
Any question?
That's actually, it's not, it's the. Oh, it's the sale. It's a sale. Okay, okay.
So I want to make sure you know what you're voting for. Any questions or comments for Phil on item eight D? Pretty straightforward. Like to entertain a motion, please?
So moved.
Rosick, second.
Any comments for the comments? Call roll, please?
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Zaffel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll see you on the fifth.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Phil.
We're going to move on to Consider Act, the development agreement for Arrowood subdivision, Phase One. Mr. Frye?
Thank you, Mayor. The development agreement that's in the packet is our standard template that we've used for many years now. There's been some slight changes over time. One was we changed how we collect money for trees, the street trees, so that information's in here. And then also with the phasing on subdivisions, one of the lessons we learned is that you're never guaranteed the next phase comes along if there's a drop in the market. So our water utility has wording in there that provides them with easements that if we need to loop the water main before the next phase comes in, that we have the ability to do that. So those are the items that are in there. The only other thing that's different, or the one thing that's different in this one, is we're allowing them one early start building permit prior to final plat.
Any questions for Mr. Frye?
Can you repeat that last part?
We're allowing them one early start building permit prior to final plat.
For like a demo home?
I'm assuming yes.
All right.
Any other comments? Alderman Shellpepper.
Wasn't there like a bike trail associated with Arrowood at all? Running along Valley at some point? Wasn't there some discussion around that? Anybody? Was that a different one? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was Morgan Station.
That's what I was thinking. Yeah, okay. Sorry.
Like to entertain a motion?
So moved, Zaffel.
Second, Mulder.
Any further discussions or questions? Call roll, please?
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Zaffel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Okay, next up, our staff reports. Do we have any staff reports, Mark?
Yes, Mayor. I was pleasantly surprised last week Friday when I opened my emails and saw one from Craig Thompson, Transportation Secretary for the State of Wisconsin, indicating that the grant that was submitted by Waukesha County for the connection to the pedestrian underpass was awarded in the amount of two point two eight one million. It was great for me. I've been on this project since two thousand and thirteen. And this actually started back when QuickTrip that's on the southeast corner there came into the city and they actually got denied because there was concerns of safety of the traffic crossing over the trail. Capes Farm sued us for twenty million and we eventually settled so that they could build that facility. But it also then raised the interest. And this, the initial comments came from a group of biking people. I apologize. I don't remember who they were, but it's quite possible that Lynn Wright was probably one of them.
Absolutely, she was. Yes.
So, yeah, so that was, you know, the first discussion back in two thousand and thirteen of this. And Mayor Daley was in office at that time, got everybody together and said, wow, we got to work to do this. So we went to the DOT and they were well into the planning for the. So we went to the DOT and they were well into the planning for the reconstruction of State Trunk Highway 67. As a matter of fact, when we finally got the approval to move ahead, it was like a week later and we were doing 90% plan comments for the DOT. So that shows that these drawings were ready to go out the door. So initially, the Southeast Region Director for the DOT was Dwayne Johnson. Dwayne had worked very well with the city and all of us for many, many years. And partway through our project, before we had the approval to put the structure in, he had moved up in the DOT and a gentleman by the name of Brett Wallace became the director. Now Brett lives, lived in the city. I don't know if he still does. He actually came in and literally 11th hour said, yes, we'll put the structure in as part of our project. We'll pay the first 500,000. You're responsible for all the cost after that. So city incurred about $345,000 to do that. But that was the first time that, you know, there was hope of getting this in. There was a lot of discussion. The city had to do a lot of the legwork up front because being in the smaller government, we could move quicker and easier. So we took care of, you know, all the land things and every, all the agreements with the DOT. And actually, we got to bring back another one because there was a timeframe. For those of you that were here, Matt Rosick for sure was here. Timeframe to when we had to connect. And next year would be the end of that seven years. So we do have another agreement that they had provided to us a little while back that removed that connection date. So we'll be bringing that back now that this is all moving forward. But it was through Brett Wallace and that team then that said, yeah, we'll do this. So we got it put in there. Once everything was done, and we were working all the time in partnership with Waukesha County, their parks and planning area, Dale Shaver is the supervisor, the department head of that. It was Dale Shaver. Then eventually we were working with Steve Brunner and Nikki Jensen and working through the project. And, well, actually there was a Dave Birch and he's now since retired. But they submitted for the TAP grant. We got that. We're all happy. We went out to bid and the bids came in and we said, what? So unfortunately, that slowed us down, put a stop. Met with the DOT and we said, hey, just turn down that grant and put in for a bigger one. And we're thinking, hey, we're in, we're in. And we didn't make the cut. So that raised some concerns, but you know, we never backed away from this and we stayed working together. You know, the city, Waukesha County, individuals from the DOT. We had meetings out here in Room Three. How do we make our grant application better? What do we need to do? You know, because this was a high priority for the city and this was very, very important. And so, you know, the last time we met, County Executive Paul Farrah was there, Representative, or County Supervisor Fode, Representative Bart Dietrich, and Waukesha County Staff, City Staff. And at that time, you know, the thought, the process was that we would be submitting for the CMAC grant, CMAQ. And, you know, but, you know, there were still questions of what happens if we don't get it. But I kept saying, in Frye we trust, this will happen. And Kevin knows that. That was my quote to Kevin. But that's when he was out digging. I said, don't worry about this.
Come away, Kevin.
Yeah, we got this, we got this.
Got a new shovel now. I don't know what to do with it.
Well, you can start digging again because now we can go.
Yes.
But, so, you know, we worked through them and, you know, and at the end of the day, the process worked. But it was a lot of people working behind the scenes to make this happen, to get us to where we are today. And it's funny because Dwayne Johnson, as I mentioned, Southeast Director, he left and Brett Wallace, we actually ended up.
The rock.
Yeah. That's right.
In person. They don't even look alike. But, but Dwayne Johnson actually came back because Brett Wallace went down and worked on Foxconn. So then Dwayne Johnson came back to the district. So he was part of it and sent out a note of congratulations to all of us for this that had taken place. But I'm very, very excited about this. This is going to be great. It's something that everybody in this community has wanted and they're all questioning. And rightfully so, you know, you can't tell me it costs $2 million to connect to a tunnel. There's a lot of utility things out there. There's concerns with groundwater. The elevation of the floor of the pedestrian underpass is 13 feet down from the road grade. So there's quite a few things that have to happen. There's two major poles for the ATC line that's on the east end of this that we have to secure and hold in place. So things like that, when contractors get a little worried when they see things, you know, contractors are afraid of water. So if they think there's de-watering, they go a little high on their numbers. But even with that all in place now, and we have worked great with QuickTrip. They were there from the start, working with us. Target Distribution has been working with us and the attorneys on that. Matter of fact, it was Bill Chapman that wrote the first easement. So when you start going back and talking all these names, there's just been a lot of people that all kept looking in the same direction and working in the same direction to get this thing done. So I'm just thrilled to sit here tonight and talk about it, so.
Evidently.
Yeah. I could go on for another hour. I'm glad it's a short meeting because the mayor said, what item's going to drive us long tonight? And I said, staff reports. But that's all I have to say on it.
You know, thank you, Mark, for sharing that. Mark, do we have any other staff reports from?
No.
Please, anybody? Everything's good? Okay. Let's move on to reports and comments from Alderman. Any reports and comments from Alderman? Alderman Kavieski.
Just a quick update. There was a Western Lakes Fire District fundraiser at Cornerstone on Saturday. It was a lot of fun. Mayor, you were there. Alderman Rosick was there. We had about 125 people attend for Casino Night and approximately $40,000 was raised to help support Western Lakes Fire District Video Laringo Scope to help with field innovations when needed. So hopefully that helps get that project across the finish line. Thank you guys so much for being there and for the community being there. It was really John Sutner and the Cornerstone team that put that together. So good, good stuff.
How much did you win?
I am not allowed to gamble anymore, so no.
Okay.
Well, the goal was to gamble, but to lose all your money, so it all went to the fire department. Which I think everybody did a pretty good job at that.
Was that, that was the goal?
That was the goal, yeah.
I thought I was supposed to win.
You did, right?
Well, any other comments? Alderman Rosick.
Just a couple of kind of questions that I'd like some information on when we get a chance. One, I'd like to find out where we're at on either a policy or decision or proposals for the spend on the federal COVID money. We've had some of this money in for over a year. I'd like to know what the amount is and what, we have at least ideas about it and a report back on that. We also haven't heard since our last vote on 517 where that's at. Where are we at on fundraising? Where are we at on planning? I mean, I think we voted on the last set of plans and some of the ideas probably three, four months ago. So I'd like to know where we're at on that. The last thing I have a question on is we still have a concealed carry prohibition sign on the front of City Hall. And I think I'd like to talk to the chief or get a report from staff on whether that's still necessary, seeing how we do not have municipal court here anymore. We don't have a mental health institution or jail or the police department. So I think we should allow our citizens to carry legally that are allowed by law in places they can. So I'd like us to look into that and changing that policy as soon as possible. That's all I have. Thanks, guys.
Mark, we got all that?
Yeah, and you want me to respond?
You don't, not, no.
Not in this point?
No. No.
Nope, just a couple of questions and stuff to throw out there.
Nope. What we'll do is make sure you get the information out to everybody, either by email or maybe staff reports at the next council.
Or weekly update. I can include some of that. At least, I'll do two out of the three.
It's really just stuff I was thinking about today, so it's nothing major.
Any other comments from council members? I have a couple of quick comments. Lou, Cornerstone, that was a blast. That was really a fun event on Saturday. I took my daughter and we really had a good time. And you gave a big kudos to Cornerstone, but I saw you working really, really hard. So it was a wonderful thing for the Western Lakes Fire Department, so thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn and wish everybody a wonderful rest of the week.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
And we're, ooh, quick one. Could jinx it by saying anything.